All right, I want to welcome you to the September 11th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. We're here at the Airport Business Center and I'm not going to go into any political soapbox rant on all the things that have happened since yesterday. But I do feel, based on some of the things that we were all tagged on and tagged in last night, I want to publicly say to Dr. McPhee that I appreciate his two statements that he's put out. You know, free speech is a fundamental right that we all have, but free speech also has consequences as we represent organizations on what we say. And Dr. McPhee could not have put into writing anything better than what he put in his last statement about our role, not only as elected officials, but as public servants. He put it with representatives of the state government and with MTSU that it's our responsibility to make sure that we create a dialogue in an environment where it's open for people to say what is on their heart. Sometimes we agree with that and sometimes we don't agree with that, but at no point, I don't think anyone sitting here wishes that someone would lose their life or their thoughts. So with that, let's say a prayer and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, we come to you today with a heavy heart, not only that it's September 11th and that we want to honor those that have given their life on that day. Those people that when they saw danger that they didn't run away from danger, that they ran to danger. I pray for all the families, the sons, the daughters, the moms, the dads, that have been 20-plus years without their family members. And we use this as a day that we say that we never forget. I pray for those that still are holding that line, those that are still running to danger for those in our community and I pray that you put a hedge of protection on them. I also pray that you continue to comfort their families when those individuals are not at home, that they come home safely. Lord, we lift up our entire country to say that there has to be a better way for us to be able to live as individuals and at the same time live as one in a community, that we do that with grace and glory from you. Give us compassion, give us discernment, and give us the ability to see things that you have in front of us. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have four items that we need to talk about on action. We have the Thompson Lane widening revised easement offers. Valerie.
Good afternoon. In July, early July, we sent out easement offers for the 98 or 99 easements that we need along Thompson Lane for the widening project. And we have received, at the date of our, right before our board meeting, we had received seven counteroffers. Those counteroffers, most of them were based on what T.DOT had offered them for either property takes or easements. And so we have gotten those counteroffers together of those seven, and the majority of the counteroffers of that total, the total that we are asking for additional to cover those counteroffers is $191,000. And the majority of that is the Swanson property, which is closest to the Broad Street side of the project. It's a large vacant piece. You all may be aware of where that is. But if you all remember, we used tax assessor values for our offer amounts. We had requested, as well as legal, had requested for T.DOT to share their appraised values and they declined to share that information with us. So we had a starting point. We initially got $689,000 approved for those offers. So at this time, and we may be back as we get additional counteroffers, because again, this is just seven of the 98 or 99 easements that we do need, we are requesting again $191,644 for the counteroffers that we've received. That brings our easement acquisition total as of right now to $880,644 and we request approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Move for approval.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to the housing rehabilitation for 2227 Haven Drive. This is change order one. Mr. Holtz?
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. The item before you is change order number one for rehabilitation project. We're doing it 2227 Haven Drive. It's for some drywall patching and a ramp with a landing. Total cost is $2,300. Recommend approval.
So. Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Robert. All right, let's move to Affordable Housing Program 607 Olympia. Ms. Klein?
Good afternoon. Before you today is down payment assistance of $10,000 for a qualified first-time homebuyer of a pre-existing home at 607 Olympia Place. They have applied for and met the requirements of the Affordable Housing Assistance Program. Recommendation for approval, if you have any questions.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to item four, ordinance 25032. This is a fiscal year 26 budget amendment. Erin?
Hi, yes, now that we've closed the books for FY25, this is just a housekeeping item to update the FY26 budget for the amount of carryforward available to our budget items. I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend for approval.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to our workshop items. We have a presenter, we have Donna Barrett. She's with the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board. She doesn't really need an introduction, but she's going to talk about Recycle Right Tennessee. Donna.
Thank you. And the only introduction is to which hat I'm wearing today. My understanding, I can take over this screen. What do I need to do?
There, bottom of the crown that's been up in Donna.
Is that it? All right. Oh, there we go. All right, I believe, I've done several presentations since I was last here, but I believe when I last presented, I indicated we were launching recyclerighttn.com. I'm pleased to say we have launched recyclerighttn.com and I wanted to give you a quick run-through of what the website does and report on just how wonderfully well it's been received. If we can start, the site is very simple. It goes away quickly. Here we go. And we intentionally kept it that way. We wanted it to be something that answered the questions, what can I recycle and where do I recycle? So you simply open up the homepage, you pick Rutherford County, and you can pick between convenience centers or recycling locations. The recycling locations include the convenience center, so I'm going to click on that. Move down the screen, and these are all the categories of items that can be recycled in Rutherford County. I am pleased to say that in addition to the county convenience centers, we have 120 private sector partners. And what I mean by that, it could be Clark Iron and Metal, who that is their business to recycle, or it could be Staples, who part of their sustainability program within their sustainability project within their corporate structure allows for them. And let me give you an example on Staples. We'll go to electronics to show you how, well, we'll go to Office Depot. So we have the Leanna Convenience Center listed because it was electronics. And then any additional information for our location goes here. We're trying to give everybody as much information as possible to make it as easy as possible for them to recycle and know what to take with them and where. In addition to that, every location has a Google map, so wherever you are, you can click that and it will give you drive directions directly to it. We have a contact page where we can be contacted and it goes directly to, I will introduce, she's in the room hiding in the back, Asia Weatherford. She is the right-hand extraordinaire for Recycle Right. I don't have a title to properly give her because she does everything for us, but she fills those and makes sure we get the right answer for it. And we have a fax page with frequently asked questions that are constantly being updated as we get feedback from the community. And we'll tell you from day one, the contact page was utilized and we continue to receive information, either congratulations or what about this, questions on that. What I wanted to elaborate on a little more, I'm pleased with the website, that it's up and running. We have presented this to the governmental bodies of both Warren County and Cannon County and very, very well received with that. We haven't quite yet got to Coffee County yet. They do a good job of recycling as it is, so this will just be a bump up for them. In addition, with our efforts, we are assisting MTSU with improving their recycling and making contacts for them so that they can offer more to the students and faculty for their monthly recycling projects that they do. We, I'm pleased to announce the website in less than 60 days has 773 active users and it has had 9,200 event contacts. So it's been contacted, reviewed over 9,000 times. On our Facebook page, which is up and running also, we've had 6,270 views, again, in less than 60 days, and we have joined 17 groups that represent the four counties, probably more so in Rutherford County than the other counties, but we have representation in all four counties on Facebook groups in addition to our Facebook page. We have partnered with the Discovery Center to do pop-up classes at their facility and be part of one of the presenters for their Steema Palooza that's taking place in October. We have met with county school leadership and received support for us assisting them in improving their recycling skills, both as a school entity and then within the school for the students as well. And we will be starting that project next month. And with that, I'm going to pause for questions. I'm just pleased with this. It has been much, it's what we've been looking for. And I think this helps us get the residents and then the next step will be helping the businesses achieve the contacts that they need as well. But this helps our residents, again, answer that question, they want to recycle, they don't know where to recycle, they don't know what, they can recycle. And this is without much of an advertising budget or push. We're still working on commercials to run with this. Those will be forthcoming, hopefully by the end of October. But this has all just been word of mouth and what we've done here with these presentations. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Questions for Donna?
And I think one of the discussions that we've talked about as a council, and this is really at Donna's urging, to talk about in upcoming months, maybe even at our council workshop, about possible recycling opportunities and what that looks like, even maybe with some recycling at West Main and just even looking at a possible downtown recycling program for businesses to see what that would look like. So none of that's been finalized and we are not coming out saying that that's a plan that we, any of us can afford without seeing it, but it's something that's definitely worth the discussion.
I have spoken with staff about looking at what it would cost to maybe run a truck once a week for downtown businesses on a voluntary basis to participate in a recycling program, see what those costs would be, and then maybe even working with Main Street and Sarah Callender and seeing what the likelihood of the participants would be and see what kind of, you know, what the carrying cost would be and what that would have to be carried over to the participants and see if it's a viable option. So we are putting together some data, some information for you all to consider later.
And if there are any hiccups along the way, Asia and I will be more than happy to trace down any rabbit hole to find what we need to make this possible. Again, this exceeded our wildest expectations as far as the response back, and I know there are small businesses looking for this opportunity where they too can recycle. And to add one final thing, I believe I mentioned last time that we were partnering with Tennessee Environmental Council to do the yearly recycle roundup at Rutherford Parking Lot at MTSU. We have the results of that back. For the four hours that we participated and Asia and I participated, we were the last umbrella you came to, so we got to say hello and thank you to all 400 cars that came through there in a four-hour time period, and we collected and diverted 52,000 pounds of electronics, mattresses, tires, styrofoam, medicine, and cardboard out of our landfill. So a big thank you to the community for participating in that, and I'm sure we could do just as good, if not better, with our businesses.
I think one of the things, whenever we talk about this long-term sustainability and answers, recycling is always one of the questions, why aren't we doing more of that? So I really applaud you for giving us this place to send folks to get information because information is power and there's a lot of people in our community that understand recycling and long-term sustainability for these answers are individual decisions that they make, but they make those decisions with information. And I applaud you for having this available to our citizens because I know it'll be well used.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the draft MOU with the Town of Smyrna and Rutherford County. Keep going.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Before you, as a draft copy of the MOU between the city of Merschbro and the Town of Smyrna and, sorry, I did say Rutherford County, I think, to conduct a study that would determine if it'd be feasible to combine emergency communications resources into a single center with the goal of improving service delivery to individuals in our community. Currently, there are multiple agencies in Rutherford County responsible for operating their own public safety answering point, with each of them responsible for receiving non-emergency calls for service, gathering information for first responders, and providing pre-arrival instructions to callers, as well as dispatching resources and coordinating responses. I think the ultimate goal of this study is to see, are we doing things as efficiently and as effectively as possible? I think some of the things we'd like to identify are the ways to streamline the call processing system, are there ways to improve our inter-agency communication, are there any duplication of services that need to be reduced? And another thing that we're looking for, are there any ways to potentially find some benefits to our employees in those centers? Tough job, there's a lot going on in those centers. I know that when we look at Rutherford County, we're one of the few jurisdictions of our size that does not have a consolidated communication system. Now, a lot of those jurisdictions may have particular PSAPs that opt out of participation in a larger center, but for the most part, you're seeing a consolidation of those resources into a single center that we think that would benefit the citizens that we serve. We know that there are a lot of unanswered questions as to what some of those benefits might be. That's why we're reaching out and asking for this study to occur. We know that this is the very first step in any type of process, and if you look at identifying a potential transition to a consolidated communication center, you're probably talking years, possibly years. But I think it's incumbent on us to at least have that discussion so that the next generation of public safety leadership, so that the next generation of leadership within the city that kind of at least has good information to act upon should this topic ever come up again. I know Chief Jason Irvin is with me today, as well as Public Safety Director for Rutherford County, Chris Lark. Jason is from Chattanooga. He served many years at the Chattanooga Police Department and he has the benefit of seeing the consolidated concept work in Hamilton County. So each of us are available to answer any questions that you might have regarding this matter.
Any questions? The chief already had budgeted for this study in the fiscal year 2526 budget, so I don't think there's really anything that we have to vote on right now. As the MOU comes back and if it exceeds what that budgeted amount, then there will be something that we, as a council, would need to discuss. But I think it'd be appropriate to note, we talked about this, Chris, was it four years ago, four or five years ago? And, you know, I think it's important to say what this is not. This is not the city, the Town of Smyrna, Rutherford County. And I would note that after we get done with this, I think it'd be important to maybe let's talk to Laverne and Eagleville to make sure that everyone's, you know, wants to be on board. But this is not saying we're starting the process of looking at the unified dispatch. But what it is saying is that our leaders and chief, they want to get data to be able to say, is that something that we need to look, you know, into the future to possibly do? Four years ago, like most things with government, it got into a turf issue and political sides and now we're not saying, let's not do this. This is going to be a third-party study that will be done by our emergency service providers and leaders, and then they will make recommendations that will come back to all the municipalities, the towns, and the county. And it should be noted as well that this is a time when these groups have come and said, let's work together and let's try to find a way that benefits all of the citizens of Rutherford County. So hopefully that's what this MOU will do.
Yes, sir. And like you said, just with it being a draft, if there are other jurisdictions like Laverne that want to come on board, we're open to that. And I know that we have tried to be as open and transparent about this process as possible, talking to other people that could be affected, the fire chiefs and in other jurisdictions to make sure that, hey, everybody knows that we're at least looking at this concept and that there's no secrets here. We're going to be above board and we're going to be open about what we're doing and what our intent is.
Chief, has the other bodies already approved this?
No, sir. No, sir. So my understanding is this is the first presentation and Jason, you might.
Smyrna, Smyrna had a discussion, I believe, Jason, it was last week or week before last, so we're the second and I think the county from there.
Okay. What's the timeframe that it's starting and ending?
So basically, what would happen is if we can get agreement on the MOU, our next steps would be to secure a vendor to conduct the study. And of course, we'd have to follow whatever processes are in place to be able to do that. So once we got that in place, it'd be whatever timeline's established through that vendor. So definitely, hopefully.
Months?
Yeah, it'd be months. It'd be months. I think there's a lot of information to gather out there and there's a lot of work to do. So it would be some time, but definitely I would hope something would be completed by the end of this fiscal year.
Wonderful. Okay. I don't think there's anything for us to vote on. Just more of an FYI, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I know it'll generate discussion and just want to make sure everybody aware of what's going on and be able to answer questions that you may potentially get.
And I think it was this week that Sheriff Fitch, you made an announcement that he's retiring and I would say the timing is good, that with that announcement and with our teams that are, we're all growing and we want to make sure that between PSAPs and all the different organizations that the best service is being provided in our city, in our county. So there's no ulterior motives besides that.
And I might be redundant with this, but I've been with Merschbro since 1988 and I don't think that there's ever been a collective study on emergency communications in this county in 30-something years. So it's probably time, and like I said, I think we just owe it to the next generation of leadership and whoever takes the reins from here to know that, hey, this matter's at least been studied and we've got some answers.
Darren?
Well, I was just going to ask, we have our September 18th council meeting and then we've got a meeting on October 2nd. And the idea would be we've presented this or introduced it today for your consideration or for your review. How much time would you all need for us to bring it back?
I don't think, there's not really anything to vote on yet until the MOU's in place and then the study, the individual that's going to do the study and then get the cost on all that. So there's, I don't think it would be able to be back by September, maybe even October, would it?
Depends on the procurement, with the process that we'll need to follow that. And of course, we've got great cooperation with Rutherford County and Smyrna, but there is what procurement procedures are we going to have to follow in getting that. But I think once that's accomplished, then.
Does the MOU spell out the cost share?
It does.
On the actual study?
And it has a maximum amount that it should not exceed.
Since the MOU deals with the cost sharing factor for the study, we would need a vote of council to approve us entering the MOU. So that would be why we would bring it back for your consideration.
Do we want to wait until we get that cost back and then that way we would have what the cost is before we voted on it?
Probably wouldn't have the, would you have the cost until you authorize the MOU? Because is it going to be a bid thing or?
And that's some of the things that we'd have to discuss with the county and the Town of Smyrna and see what approach we take. So that could potentially put it off several weeks. But, you know, it's one of those things, if we have to just go through the steps, if it gets delayed, it's something that we can deal with.
And your MOU, though, you could put percentages or something.
Yes, we've got a not-to-exceed amount in there right now based on some ideas of what a study might cost.
Sure.
So it is flexible in that way.
Let's just bring it back at the 18th meeting. We can, I mean, it's one of those layups that.
Gotcha. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That we can vote on it and then at least give chief the authority to move forward from there.
Excellent.
And I think the cost sharing is almost the same cost sharing that we have with the Emergency Services Director, that it's based upon population, that we split that with the county and Smyrna and Laverne and that may change if Laverne and some of the other municipalities want to get involved. So, okay, thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
All right. Darren, item seven, Keystone Broad Street redevelopment amendments overview.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity. I tried to send this presentation out with the original agenda and then some modifications. I sent it out yesterday, but this has really been a long journey between the city. I sent it out yesterday, but this has really been a long journey between the city, Hillsborough Residential, all the design consultants. Got John Harney here, who's also been instrumental in getting us to the point that we're at. We believe that we're finally at a point where we will have a, a development and financial agreement, a TIF agreement for you all to consider on October 2nd. That's what we're striving towards in order to meet an October 15th Industrial Development Board meeting. Once that economic plan and the TIF is approved by the IDB, it will come back to the council, and we're anticipating that to be October 23rd. I really wanted to go through some of the highlights, and I know it's a lot of numbers, and I apologize for that on the front end, but I really don't want there to be any surprises. And I want you guys to really understand, I've talked with each of you about this one-on-one, but I really wanted to bring it back and just remind, repeat, and reinforce kind of where we are in the process. So as you all know, we are looking at this project now being in three sections and it put, and it being phased. Section one being the 239 multifamily units, the bulk of the retail, a 422 parking garage, space parking garage. Section two being 100-unit room condos with around 3,000 square feet of retail and a 199 parking space garage. I'm sorry, 199 plus 115, that's 314, 314. The hotel is again more of the speculative section three, 115 rooms with 7,100 square feet of retail. The 115 spaces for the hotel would have to be parked in the parking garage on section two. This is around $150 million invest taxable value. The assessed value is only around 55.7 million. That's what's based, how we base the TIF reimbursement off the actual assessed values. But you can see here how those units and the taxable values are broken out again between those sections. The TIF is basically where eighty, roughly, I just did the, had to redo the calculations on this, 84% of the property tax that's collected by the city would be reimbursed through the 20-year TIF. 79.5% of the property tax would be reimbursed by the county. That equals, you can kind of see at the bottom here, 25.55 million. The split between that on the property taxes is 35% of that 25 million is the city, 65% of the county. So the county really is carrying the, the majority of, of that reimbursement. And again, you can see the breakout by section, where it's 66% of the TIF is accounted for in section one, 21% in section two, and 13% in section three. There is an economic impact to the city. We do retain or reserve almost 16% of the property tax that is generated from these different sections. After, really, this is kind of a, a 22-year TIF because we show that the hotel would start two years after section one and section two. You can kind of see up here at the hotel, you're showing in 2030, two years of, of no economic impact because the hotel would not be built until 2032. That is part of that phasing component. Again, of the, of the economic impact, 44% in section one, 68% in section two, and only 4% in section three is, is pertaining to property tax. The remainder, the, the remainder of that is really the sales tax and the hotel motel lodging tax. But you can see, we're talking about a $10 million over 22 years, even by providing the TIF reimbursement. I did this for the county as well. They are keeping 20, almost 20, 20 and a half percent of their property tax over the 20-year period. And again, 67, 84, and 9% of that economic impact is based on property tax. The remaining is the sales tax and the hotel motel. And, and they're looking at an economic impact of about 13.5 million. So again, a lot of numbers, but I'm trying to give a high-level view of where the majority of that, that economic impact is coming from and how the reimbursement of the TIF gets back to the developer. We did, we are looking at selling these, the purchase and sale agreement has broken this out into section one, two, and three. Section one, again, which is the multifamily and the parking garage number one, that's around a $3 million sale price. Section two is again the condos and parking garage two, that's about a $1.4 million sale price. And the hotel is not being proposed, is being sold to Hillsborough Residential at this time, but they are looking at about a three-year option, and that's about a $554,000 purchase price if that option is, is chosen to move forward. So one of the, couple of the stipulations I did want to bring up is these closings are subject to WGNS property. It must close before the city closes on its property. So they do still have to work out that negotiation and that deal with WGNS from their current building over into the, the parking lot that's east of Church Street. And again, we've got a contingent, we, the city has a right to repurchase if it's, if there's a failure to, failure to start the project within a specified timeline per the approved schedule. We are not counting demolition as starting the project. They're actually going to have to go into some vertical elements of the, of the project to be considered starting. So if that does not commence, then we do have the right to, to get that property back. One of the main, main things that have changed since maybe I've spoken to you one-on-one is the off-site road improvements. We decided that that was going to be just much easier handled in the construction contract if, if that's constructed by the city. This would, basically, the four and a half million dollars that we receive on the sale of the, of the, of section one and section two would go towards these road improvements. The original deal was that money would basically be, we'd contributed back to the development group for capital improvements of the project. It just got a little bit too, not the best, we couldn't come to some agreements on price escalation and some other parts of the deal, and we thought it would just be easier to move the, the deal forward if the city took those on. But this, these are expected to be within that four and a half million dollars of the purchase price. So we're looking at kind of areas one through three in the first 12 months. That's South Church, north of Broad, there's some turning lanes on the westbound portion of, of Broad Street on the church, and then there's a, a D cell lane or right turn lane onto, an eastbound off of Broad onto church. The other two areas, we're talking about having within the, within 24 months are the green and kind of the orange. Those are the improvements to South Church. And again, that Vine Street and that Front Street realignment for that, that intersection to get it safer and get a signal out there. So again, this would be, these improvements would be made from the proceeds of the sale of the property. Last thing, and I don't want to, I, I jump around a little bit here because it's kind of difficult to follow to some degree, but I highlight here, they're trying to finalize the agreement with the WGNS group. Now, this is kind of the best, best-case scenario on schedule by the end of the year. That would allow a, the city to close on the land purchase for section one on January of 2026. They would have to basically, at that point, they could not start demolition on any of the city property. They have to go build the WGNS building, the new building on the east side of Church Street. I think it's by, is that Sevier Street? Anyway, that, that.
Sevier and Church.
Sevier and Church, yep. So they have to build the new building, get WGNS relocated, and then this is where that January 1 of 2027, they would actually start demoing the buildings on sections one, two, and three at the beginning of 2027. That would also, you can see down on the blue, the section, that would, that would coincide with a land purchase for section two. All that being said, both, both of the closings and the projects are looking at finishing at the end of 2028. Now, one of the items I wanted to bring up is there is, we show the actual project construction completion per the contract at, as January of 2030. That's about a 12-month, I'm just going to call it a, a time contingency allowance. If they don't get the, if they don't get the negotiation or finalize the agreement with WGNS by the end of December, maybe that takes the end of February, then everything shifts. And, and if there's issues constructing WGNS or issues constructing the other projects, basically, we've, we've just provided ourselves about a 12-month buffer in the project so we don't have to come back and ask for approval if they don't hit these, these, the end of 2028 deadline. And then again, you can see the option for section three, that's from January of 26 through January of 29. So that's kind of the schedule and how we're phasing it. And I know I've got some questions here from Mr. Maxwell that I just received, but if you all have questions first, I think we should, we can go through those and just want to make sure you all have a comfort level. And I, I will say, on, well, let me stop there and just ask if you all have questions first.
Any questions for Darren?
Just a quick note. As part of the deal and the part of the, of the sale of section one, section two and section three will be, those buildings will be demolished and will be put at pad-ready condition, even if those, with, for example, the hotel doesn't move, if they've got the option, they will get it demoed and pad-ready and have utilities. Same for section two. You want me to read, I can read Austin's questions?
Sure.
What would you, so I'm, I'm, this is probably, I'm going to send these to the development team after I answer them, just to make sure, because I, I don't want to misrepresent their confidence level or their, they have, along this entire time, shown that they are very committed to the project and, and doing everything they can under the current financing conditions to, to make this path move forward. So what would you gauge the success of phase one? Is it 100% likely that phase one will be complete? Because I assume that you have the financing piece in place, and it is 100% that you will build everything as outlined, as outlined in phase one, 100% correct? Well, I'm, I'm afraid I can't, 100% is, I, I, I wouldn't give anything 100%. I would say it's definitely 90, 95% ready to go. I think they've, they've got their financing in place, the HUD, they're doing that through a HUD loan, and they've been working on that. The only thing, again, for, that could, they've got to get through the WGNS hurdle. That is, that they've got to satisfy WGNS and that new, get that agreement in place before phase one can start. Now, the question becomes, what would you gauge the success of phase two? My understanding is that the success of this is dependent on pre-sales of the condominiums and that you have an interest list. What is your deadline for pre-sales to where you would be able to say phase two has X percent of pre-sales and therefore we are moving forward with phase two, or phase two has had enough pre-sales and therefore we are not moving forward with phase two? What is your overall percent of success that you feel you will actually move forward with phase two? So I know, and I'm going to, I'm thinking back in time here, and I may be parroting Mr. Harney, so he may want to chime in. I think you said somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 45 pre-sales on the 100, on the 100-unit complex may be necessary for the conventional loan that they're looking for, somewhere in that range. So, and I know that they're, per John, that they do have a VIP list, a large number of VIP interest list that is pretty, I guess, pretty substantial in the fact that they hadn't even seen floor plans yet and the final design hadn't been done. So I, you know, do you give it an 80% chance of success if, if, when you see Town Creek moving forward at such a good pace, and if phase one starts to build the momentum there? You know, all I hear about the, the economic development community is momentum builds momentum and kind of the, when people see it coming, it, it spurs on additional growth. So I'd, I'd love to give that an 80% chance of success for phase two based on pre-sales. But yes, pre-sales will be, I think, a precursor or contingents on, on whether or not that, that second phase moves forward. So what is the cost of, of the garage if it were built alone, standalone in phase one? Is it more or less than the $13 million that you propose as incentives in phase two that you're putting in? And I didn't really catch, I, I went back to the, to this piece. I'm not sure about the $13 million in incentives that he's talking about in phase two, but the, the parking garage in phase one, you can see, and the podium parking on the east component, it's about a $9.6 million garage expense, and they're showing the garage number two in section two at about a $7.2 million expense. So I'm not sure how that compares and what he's referenced to the $13 million in incentives. I looked back at the TIF.
The TIF, yeah.
And the TIF reimbursement for section two is only about a $5.3 million reimbursement. Majority, you can see, as, as we've shown earlier, two-thirds of the TIF is really based on section one, and the remaining third is section two and three. And three, again, is kind of a, somewhat speculative at this point. Last question, is the developer open to none of the TIF moving forward should phase two and three not come to fruition? This project has changed multiple ways on the financing and phases that I believe this is a reasonable question to ask and pose, as ideally, I believe, the council voted to approve this when it was all three phases. So yes, I mean, I think the answer is the TIF will only be reimbursed based on what is built. It's got to be built, it's got to have a certificate of occupancy, it's got to have an assessed value or appraised, or assessed value, and then the TIF will, because our, I'll be honest, our, our property tax rate's probably going to change two, two times or at least one time because we're getting reappraised next year. So our 95 cent property tax rate's probably going to, it's going to go lower based on what we've seen with Metro Nashville and with Franklin. So yes, they're only going to get the TIF reimbursement for what is built.
I'm wondering if he meant by that, if the TIF didn't start until phase two and phase three started, and that way the TIF's not going towards the apartments, is what I'm wondering if he's talking about that.
Oh, yeah. I, I think, so he's saying that we, they would, they would not receive the section one TIF until section two is built?
Right.
Yeah, I, I, that, that probably wouldn't work for the development team. I don't think they would, I, I don't think that would, I, I think that would not be an acceptable term. But we, you know, we're, we're at a point now where I think we're, we've gotten over all the hurdles from staff level, but again, so we're going to, we want to present that, those, that development agreement to you all for consideration on October 2nd. And if there are things that you don't like or you want to amend, and there's, the majority of you feel the same way about those amendments, then we'll introduce it, and if it, if it works.
Do you feel, do you feel comfortable where we are now?
I do, I do. There's, there's still some, there's still some rubs here and there, but I don't think, there's nothing that's, there's no hurdle that I see as being a, a gamestopper.
We're saying that they have the loan for all the money that's needed for phase one.
They, they, they are going to be going through, if you look at the schedule, they've still got to, they, they haven't gotten final design done. I mean, this, this is all still in the concept phase. So you can see, when you talk about section one, complete construction drawings, permits, and HUD financing, that's going to start in December and get through the end of '26 for them to start that, that beginning of '27. So, oh, part, part of the, if you recall, part of the commitment, and I'm going to bring this up real quick, part of the commitment, they were talking about section two, was the fact that, you know, they've got the land purchase, they've got, they're going to have $2 million in architectural design fees, the pre-development costs, the, they're, they're paying for the WGNS building from, from cash. They're, they're going to be from existing equity that they have. And then they're going to incur about a $4.4 million in site work across the entire project site. So they're, they're coming in and do, you know, expending that kind of money to demonstrate the fact. to demonstrate the fact that they're, they would, they would look foolish to just, I mean, they call it the golden handcuff approach, right? We're going to put so much money in and show you that we're so invested in this project, we can't leave. The 4 to 5 million of off-site public infrastructure improvements, that's being taken by us now. But they're going to have 12 to 13 million dollars in this project. So, but they are going to be working through their HUD financing, then they're going to be working through the pre-sales and their Section 2 financing. And they've, they're very much committed to be working to find a hotel. I mean, that three-year option, they're looking at that as worst-case scenario. They expect to have a hotel. Again, if you see Section 1 move and then you see Section 2 come online, they believe a hotel will be right, right after the, those other sections. So I trust, I trust them from the standpoint that they are doing everything that they can do under the current market, in the financing market to get this deal done. And I think the city, we're, of course, our, my job and our team's job is to mitigate our risk as much as possible. And that's where I think we're saying, hey, if things don't move, we don't want to see another one East College. We want to get this property back if it's not, if it's not going vertical. So we've built in those kind of provisions.
Just makes me a little nervous that, because I guess they will come up with the money.
If they don't, we'll get the property back.
Right.
At that point, I mean, looking at it from a, a construction side, that if they don't follow through on Phase 2 and Phase 3 after all of the site works completed, the infrastructure's completed, then the city can't, besides the projects not being built, the city can't really lose on that. We've got two pieces, two parcels of land that are developed with full infrastructure that we will have zero cost in.
Right.
I mean, I don't want that to happen, but if it did happen, somebody will easily step in and take the property that is developed with no cost to go to the next phase.
We'll have $4 million in road improvements based on the sale of the property and we will have another 4.5 million across the entire project site that they've sunk cost into demo and get the site pad-ready. So I, we do come out, I think, in my opinion, we come out, we come out of that, even if nothing, nothing gets built.
Do you anticipate knowing something else before the October when you're presenting this to us?
No, no, sir. I think, I think this is, this is the opportunity for, now, I would like to get you guys the draft development agreement as soon as possible and maybe not wait and to give you guys two days to review that. I'd like, as soon as we get it, we get it fairly well penciled as our, from our team, that we get that to you as soon as possible, let you all read through it. Because, and it's, and it's quite, it's quite extensive. And I'm, I'll be honest, it's been a steep learning curve for me. But I believe I've, we've got a handle on it and we're comfortable with it at this point. Aaron's going to sign off on it, so we know we're in good shape. But anyway, John's been in the room, Matt Taylor's been in the room, Bart Klein's been in the room. I mean, it's been, it's been, there's been some arm wrestling back and forth, but I think we're finally at a point where it's got its highest chance of success at this point. But we'll get you, we'd like to get you those agreements as soon as possible so you can look at them over and, again, get us back questions. And if we don't make the October 2 meeting, I just really wanted to get it to you all before it went to the Industrial Development Board. It will come back October 23. If for some reason we don't get it approved at October 2 and it goes to the IDB first, I don't think that violates any, any law. We could come back to you all on October 23, too, to give you more time if you need it.
So we'll vote on it again after it goes through the IDB?
Yes, you're going to vote on it again. So this is where it gets, it's way too, we have put the development agreement and the tax financing agreement into one agreement now. So the way it would work beforehand is you all approve the development agreement, the IDB would approve the tax financing agreement. But now that they're together, so, it's one agreement. So I'd rather you guys, so you guys voting on the tax, you guys really voting on the tax incentive agreement is not your role, that's really the IDB. But all the components of the development agreement, I'd like for y'all to vote first before it goes to the, to the IDB. But it can come back to you after the fact. You do have to approve the economic impact agreement after the IDB.
There's no commitments, sir, anything from us today?
No commitments today, just trying to take a very, very, very complex project and make it simple if it's possible.
Thank you for your hard work on this and the entire group. I know you've been working a lot of hours on this, legal has and the entire team. So we'll look forward to when this comes back in October.
Great, thank you.
All right, July 25 dashboard, do you have any questions for Ms. Tucker? All right, any questions on the CIP transfers? Need a motion on that, right? No, no motion.
No, this is information.
All right, and Greg's going to talk to us about Cherry Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to give a quick update on the Cherry Lane corridor area plan. As you recall, it covers a corridor including the extension of Cherry Lane starting east of the I-40 interchange and extended to the future I-24 and 6. And it will include approximately 1,814 acres of land and will cross or intersect with Northwest Broad, Old Nashville Highway and Florence Road. The expectation of the plan, the study area is to complete, completion of Cherry Lane corridor area plan will provide a 50-year plan that will better enable the City of Murfreesboro to plan transportation, land use, will better able to plan infrastructure. The plan will help promote high-quality jobs and employment-generating uses while creating employment opportunities for the community and tax revenue for the City of Murfreesboro. Also, a quick update is that we did have a stakeholder meeting with the owners of the property in the study area back in July, which went very well. We were able to update them and give them the whys, the hows and wins of the study. And that went very well. Had a full house and some on Zoom that we talked to. So I'll turn it over to Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith.
Thank you, Greg. See if I can pull up our PowerPoint. All right, well, pleasure to be in front of you. I guess we're right at noon, so that could be morning if you're a night owl or afternoon if you're an early bird. So once again, pleasure to be before the council, mayor and the city staff. And we've made a lot of progress on this project. We're going to try to keep our presentation somewhat brief. Brady Yarborough with Keenly Horn is also going to speak about some details of the transportation and leave some room for questions if you have them. So the slide you see in front of you is kind of just showing some of the background we've had to work through for our inventory and analysis, the floodplain, the railroad track, Northwest Broad, some of the limitations on the existing road infrastructure. And all of those things have gone to serve the, really, recommendations and the plan that we're going to use moving forward. And we've been using those to inform us as well as the sanitary sewer capacity issues for the area. So we're going to dive in a little bit more on these next slides and this is just a quick summary of that, basically talking about the overall big picture, the road geometry, traffic demand modeling, and then into some of the land use. So this map is kind of showing really the whole corridor, if you will, even beyond our study area, which is shown in the red line there. And something I want to point out is that this corridor is going to take some time. This is not going to happen overnight. We know that Phase 1, of course, is really in place. Phase 2 and 3, that you see the yellow and the green, those are currently in design phases with TDOT. Those phases take time. But we know that that, that design, if you will, is set pretty well with the interchange with I-40. And then what happens past that into Phase 4? This is really something that could very easily, you know, go out into that 10-year mark or beyond. So my point in saying that is even though the corridor itself is going to take some time to develop, we have to frame that up now. We have to start thinking about how this is going to affect your land use, your infrastructure, your transportation network, so that we are making very good informed decisions about the land that is around this corridor. So we have gone through a pretty vigorous process and looked at what is the best route for Cherry Lane. I want to make sure everybody understands, when I'm talking about Cherry Lane, this is a parkway. This is going to be a divided four-to-six-lane type of parkway. It's going to have limited access and it's going to be a very important east-west connector for the city. You can think in terms of Medical Center Parkway. Of course, this is going to have a different nuance to it and have some connections to the interstate, which are different. But in terms of feeling of what this, this, when we say Cherry Lane, what this is going to feel like, it's that type of parkway experience. And that's going to be, as I said, important to shape what's going on around it in terms of intersections and land use and access. So the map you see in front of you now is showing what we think is the route of preference. And I'm going to let Brady dive into some of the geometry details. But in general, that interchange with I-24, we know that's been a very important discussion with TDOT. We think that what we're showing you here, that location, is the best scenario to try to get that interchange in place. There are no guarantees that that's going to happen, but we think that is a logical location for proposing that interchange. We know that the choice lane is going to be a factor in that. And there's discussions going on right now about how far the choice lanes will come down, whether that interfaces with Cherry Lane. Right now, we believe that that choice lane is probably going to be a part of that infrastructure if that interchange happens. So we think that Point A interchange that we're showing there is our best chance of getting something that's going to work along I-24 corridor. Of course, here again, these are ongoing discussions and this is the draft plan. Then what you see is that we are, you know, crossing over Northwest Broad and the railroad. And Brady's going to get a little bit into the discussion, the specific geometry there. But we really wanted a route that was going to minimize cost and the amount of bridge that had to go over, over Ten Creek, over the railroad. We wanted to promote some kind of connection to Northwest Broad, but we did not think that doing that at an at-grade intersection made sense there. So that's kind of what shaped on that, that intersection that Brady is going to show in detail. And then the other intersections that you see there, the B, C and D, those are kind of getting into how are we going to interface with at-grade intersections with the land around us? And the, the D intersection is really going to be a single-loop connection back down to Broad. That would be signalized, that would have limited access, but it would be, allow a connection that we think is very favorable and it would also allow us to really control the transportation that goes on around it. All right, I'm going to let Brady talk a little bit, Level of Service, which I'm glad I'm handing over that topic to him.
Perfect, thanks, y'all. So I will, I'll say we're dealing with a lot of data here, so I'm going to try to kind of summarize a lot of that, just to kind of make this flow easier. So one thing you're looking at here with the photo in the background, this is the existing level of service under the existing road network conditions. And I think key takeaway here that we're seeing in all of the data that we're putting into the model here is that a lot of the existing network is at capacity and that's kind of leading to a lot of congestion issues. What we're kind of seeing here is this is showing a need to distribute the traffic load throughout the network in a, in a better way. And so what we're aiming for without this entire model is to see, you know, how Cherry Lane affects that and distributes the traffic so we're not as constricted at some of these key locations. What we have done at this time, so we've made the existing conditions model and this is under current traffic studies that we have, traffic counts. And then from there, we add on, and these other additional maps aren't shown, but they're in the models that we're working with. So from there, we'll add on committed projects. So anything that is in the MTPs and shown as, you know, currently funded projects that are coming, those will be added to this network and we look at what that does under current traffic considerations. Then from there, we kind of extrapolate all the data out and add 25 years of growth and traffic and see what the road network looks like. As you can imagine, if we do nothing with the road network as is and it's already currently under these conditions of high congestion, it just gets worse. From there, we look at several different models of, you know, I guess, the best way to put it is, let me see. Okay, yeah. So then we look at the build conditions here. And, you know, as we've added the data to it, we're looking at two main scenarios and then option to Scenario 1. Two main conditions that we're looking at here are what does the Cherry Lane east-west connection look like with full connectivity? So that would be an interchange at I-24 and then connectivity abroad. And then worst-case scenario, if those don't happen, how, how's the demand for that east-west connection with just a separated grade over Broad? And then just a flyover over I-24? What we're seeing, just kind of condense some of the numbers here, is that there would be a significant demand regardless of the two options. Kind of see here, just portion out some of the numbers, around 30,000 to 35,000 trips daily. That's the second column over here. What we're looking at, like I said, we have quite a few different data points here that we are using as, kind of see the options between the two. What you're seeing here is Phase 1 and 3 that are already committed. If they're built, they're in that section around 20,000 to 30,000 daily trips. And then if you add the Phase 4 connection, you're looking somewhere in the mid-to-upper 20,000 and 30,000 trips. So that Phase 4 segment, adding the connection to I-24, is increasing those trips about 5,000. So there is a heavy demand for this. Third column that we're kind of looking at as part of alternates to this analysis are the differences between the level of service at these kind of area segments. Level of service E and F, I guess the way to explain this starts at A, goes down to F. A is free-flow conditions, so cars are able to get on the road and drive. During the peak command, or peak demand periods, what we're seeing is that moving towards an F condition is very heavy congestion and staying in the upper range of the Ds and the Es is where it's needed, meaning the capacity is, you know, kind of at what it needs to be. You don't have a road that's too big for the amount of traffic using it. And then F conditions would be, you know, there's a heavy, heavy demand for the traffic flow on there and we're starting to incur some congestion there. The other, I guess, person, additional scenario there is we're looking at four-lane and six-lane of that Phase 4 section and mainly just to see what it does if we add an additional lane in each direction. What we're mainly seeing there is it just helps reduce some of the congestion overall. So you're going from an E and F level of service to a D and an E. So you're kind of taking all of the level of service and dropping it down a level. And the key takeaway of that is that the six-lane may not be necessary immediately, but in the overall scope of the plan, we think it may be something that may be necessary to take a look at and plan ahead. That way, we don't end up in a situation where we need the six lanes in the future and haven't thought that through as far as spacing. Multiple ways to kind of go about planning ahead for that. But with knowing that and having the background and seeing that there will be a need, you can kind of think ahead on that. So that is kind of the traffic conditions. And as we are moving forward, there are several additional steps. This is the first pass at all of this and the models. And then as we add in- This is the first pass at all of this and the models, and then as we add in land use and geometry, it kind of refines that further. Taking a step back, I can go to this one. So taking a step back, the other thing we're looking at here is the geometric constraints along the entire route. So starting across at Broad and making our way all the way to I-24, we're really looking at all the existing conditions, floodplains, sinkholes, all the terrain, existing utilities, the TVAs crossing, overall creek and its routing, and then where the railroad is. What we've found, and as Kevin mentioned, we kind of landed on as the more desirable to reduce the, or increase the feasibility of it and kind of reduce the overall cost of the entire project here. So what you're looking at, we'll start with this bottom photo. This is Broad, so Broad is moving from this top-left down to the bottom-right, and then moving across kind of right to left is Cherry Lane, Phase 4. The condition, like he mentioned, is a single-loop intersection, so this is showing a single bridge, sorry, I keep blocking that, single bridge crossing over. Main constraints here are overall creek, so coming here and coming under the railroad bridge, and in this particular situation, let's see, might be better laser. There we go. So what we're kind of seeing here is, in the current alignment of Phase 3, as it comes across, if we were to extend across at the existing alignment, you're catching overall creek in this kind of zigzag back and forth. If you build straight across, it makes a very, very long bridge. We quickly go from having the previous Cherry Lane Phase 3 being the new longest bridge to having Phase 4 be the new longest bridge. So what we've kind of done to reduce some of the overall cost and realign it slightly there, is to shift the alignment over to have a shorter connection, so we're aiming to cross over Broad, overall creek, and CSX Railroad, all in the same space there. There is not enough room, what we've noticed, to have an at-grade intersection here at Broad, and then ramp up to meet the vertical clearance over the railroad. So this is the direction that we've landed on as, as the preferred alternate there. And then as we're making our way eastward, or westward here, crossing Old Nashville, these haven't changed from what we talked about previously, still at-grade intersections. You know, we're able to tie it down, there's not a ton of constraints there. Same thing with Florence Road, the existing development, we're crossing through there, not too much changes. As we're moving across towards 24, this spacing here, so the white dash is what we were showing as the existing 2040 MTP and where it was crossing. We were concerned, there were some concerns about the interchange spacing there between I-40, down here at the bottom of the screen, and then where the interchange would be. And it's just a traffic efficiency between where the ramps are coming off and on, and there are considerations there with how traffic merges, so the further you can space them out, the better the traffic will flow there. The normal criteria of what is a good spacing is about two miles for this, so this is moving it, spacing it out further and meeting that criteria. Yep, yep, yep. And then from there, I'll say, as we're moving forward, same thing with geometry, it's not set in stone, we are just applying traffic and land use, and they help kind of shape this a little bit better. I'll let Kevin take back over, take over the land use.
Awesome. I won't stay on this slide too long, but summarize it to say, the, the transportation and the sanitary sewer analysis are data-driven. They've given us that data that we need to start shaping out land use. And now we are looking at two very important things. Where does the density occur? Where do the commerce-driven type of land uses and mixed use occur? And then also, what is that secondary road network beyond Cherry Lane? Because we have got to set some kind of pattern there to shape this on, otherwise it just continues to be kind of a undefined local road network. So we are starting to shape that out, and that's the map you see in front of you here. We were, we're still on track to have a final report and a plan due by January of 2026. We will continue to have ongoing team and updates with, with the planning team and with the city staff, and we will also have another stakeholder meeting within the next six to eight weeks, kind of revisit that land use map that I showed to you. So with that, we want to leave a little room for questions and just make sure that if you want to discuss any more of this in detail, that we can do that. Any questions?
That's a great update.
Jim Kerr, I'll look back, he agrees with everything?
He's good.
Okay.
The team, the team agreed with everything.
All right, appreciate it, thanks, Kevin. Thank you, y'all. All right, we have no boarding commission appointments. Looks like we have one beer permit.
Yes, this is for an ownership name change for a gas station located at 1251 South Church Street. The applicant has met our requirements, so we recommend pending any final building and codes inspections.
Motion to second, please call the roll.
Terrace?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Hi.
Mr. Wade?
Hi.
Mr. Wright?
Hi.
Mayor McFarland?
Do we have any statements?
Sir.
Any business from staff? Any business from council? Sir.
I ran into Mayor Carr downtown the other day, and he just wanted to express his gratitude for the police department's service downtown and taking care of our homeless situation downtown. He says his, his employees are feeling much more safe walking around in their cars and back and forth, and he just wanted to let us know that he appreciates what the city is doing downtown.
Awesome.
And I just wanted to thank the staff for taking that idea of a citizens academy and how quickly they have responded and put together a program, so that a schedule and all, you put flesh on that bone of an idea really quick, and they, they need to be commended for that, and we've already gotten how many?
Close to 60.
Close to 60 applications for the, for Citizens Academy, and we'll be determining what that size is going to be, and then do a blind draw after the 22nd. We wanted to get some idea as to what the capacity was and, and desire was from our citizens, so instead of closing it off, we decided to let the applications continue to come in until our previously designated date of September 22nd. So go ahead, and if you're interested in knowing more about local government or participating in this adventure that we're starting, you, you would be on the, the first time through, you're on the Mayflower, so you're going to be establishing how and what this could mean to our community. So put your application in, and, and we'll decide going through, and it starts on October the 6th.
Well, we have the council members' names in different categories. Are we responsible for talking about that?
The, the idea is that each night you would have, the council members will be there and kind of be the introducer, the welcomeer, tell something about your public service, and get a chance, you'd have a night that is your night to participate with the class. And I think each of, everybody, we've got everybody signed up already, don't we? Okay, so that night will be your night, and wherever that venue is going to be, you'll be there to introduce yourself and tell a little bit about what your public service has meant to you and how you got to that place, and you'll be the host for the evening. So it'll be, it'll all be a lot of fun, and like I say, we're, we're, if everybody's patient and everybody's open-minded, then a lot of good things, I think, there's going to be a lot of synergy and good things that can happen as a result of this.
Like I have parks in Rick, so will Nate, will they be conducting that? I'm just the host.
Right, yeah, they'll, they'll be doing the, the meeting.
You have to do 25 push-ups, and you have to run a mile over 10 minutes.
I think that one's out at Siegel, isn't it? That'll be out at Siegel Park, so, you know, we're going to meet at different venues and, yes, pull back the curtain a little bit and let them see how things are done, and, and then we'll also, it'll, it'll be a good evening, so. Anyway, I really appreciate the staff and how they have, and department heads as well, embraced this opportunity and, and put a lot into it already.
One thing, had a meeting this week with Valerie DeHoff, she's the Colonel Hardy Murphy Chapter President, Region Director, and then Marzi Woodard, Woodard, she's the DAR Chapter President, and to talk about the 250-year celebration. And after the meeting, I mean, I could not think of anyone else who needs more work, so Nate Williams is who I suggested to, to head up a America 250 Committee for the county and the city to talk about how that we can work over the next several months to figure out what that looks like downtown. They have all kinds of ideas that they wanted to bring forward, I've shared that with Nate and Darren, and the county has some ideas that they want to incorporate, but our team, and I say this jokingly, I mean, our, our team is used to being able to put on events and with the Freedom, our, our fireworks show, let Freedom ring, that we want to, there's a lot of things that could happen on July 4th that, so we're going to ask that Valerie would be on that committee, Marzi, someone from the chamber, someone from Main Street, someone from the county, and someone from the city, and, and our, our team would head that up and report back, so. Does anybody have an issue giving Nate more work? Nate, we're totally fine with you delegating that to someone else as well, so I guess I should say you technically work for Darren, but Darren, we're fine with whatever you think that you should have Nate do, so. I hadn't, I mean, I know this sounds bad, but I hadn't really, we had the Marine Corps here back about two months ago, but we've not really thought about what the 250-year celebration looks like in Murfreesboro, so it's a big, big deal going, I mean, I know we talked about Cannonsburg with the bicentennial, that's when Cannonsburg initially, the idea came from with Cannonsburg, so.
Mayor Westbrook's.
Yeah. So, all right, anyone have any other items? See you none, we'll stay on the journey.